At 5:30, we will call the special common council meeting to order. Could we get a roll call, please? I know you're not prepared now. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jeremy Slawinski is excused. Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
And Morrow is absent. I have not heard from him today. And as we all know, District 10 is currently vacant. We'll be filling that in about two weeks. We have two items on the agenda for tonight. Discussion of possible action regarding, one, consideration of awarding the demolition contract to raise a portion of, or all of, 1116 Main Street, AKA the Fox Theater. I believe representatives of the Sanders family are here, and you passed out some information earlier. Would you like to speak to that? Okay, all right. So then I will ask, where's DJ? DJ's back there. Mr. Schneider, can you step to the lectern, please, and give us an update as to where we are?
DJ Schneider, Building Inspection Superintendent. So this process has been fluid, to say the least, especially over the last month and a half, with today being no different. So as Director Knowski has provided everybody a couple proposals here Friday with a recommendation that's actually shifted course a little bit today. So based on some information that arose today and some clarifications that have come from the proposals, which I'll get into in a second here, staff has sort of shifted the gears, so to speak, towards what contractor we'd recommend. So a couple of the talking points here. One of the hangups with the Urban Evolutions proposal initially was that there was some reservations about tearing down the whole building. So I spoke with their representative this morning because I wanted clarification as to why, if it was a logistics issue of tearing it down, or if there was some other reason. And at that point, they did clarify that it was more of a political, they didn't want to necessarily kind of be perceived in that light as doing that. And I assured them that it's me writing the raise order, not them. You know, they're doing what they're paid to do at that point. So that settled Director Knowski's mind a little bit from that perspective. And also the discrepancy in the timeframes to get somebody to start the work. I was in there again today. There again, very concerned with the back two-thirds portion of the roof that is no doubt sagging. I think everybody can see that just from looking at the outside. I also wanted to take a peek at the northern third of the build, or the southern third of the building that could potentially have been saved if an agreement was reached. There is a leak there that everybody should know about that needs attention to. So in the meantime, if something were to change, that's something that needs to be done so it isn't freestanding in and of itself. There's still going to be some stuff that has to happen there. So based on the scheduling alone, the asbestos and lead abatement was completed last week, and all DNR permits are ready to go. So essentially, alls we need is the name of the demolition contractor, and the following day, they can go in and start hammering. So with that being said, it is staff's recommendations that we go with Urban Evolutions as the demolition contractor for this process.
It's my understanding also that there was some time differences between when the two contractors could start. Is that correct?
That was the main thing for me, as I've explained in the past to committees and council. The time thing for me is more sensitive than money. I'm more of the safety guy. You guys are the money people, right? So that's the unfortunate situation we're in. CND Excavating, the second proposal, cannot give me a start date, period. So right now, the closest thing they said they would do to giving me a date would be maybe December after Christmas. So that's too much time for me to feel comfortable.
Well, and to put that into perspective, you had, went into the building with one of the people who were going to issue a proposal. Tell everybody what happened there.
That was actually Director Knowski. But long story short, is a person that does this for a living, and they're only a demolition company, seeing that sagging member and the condition and water that was there, and said, "That's enough for me inside here. I don't want to be in here. I want to, I can do the rest of my estimate and estimating from outside the building." I also had another engineer in there, was it three weeks ago? Same thing. She said that the roof is just, it's beyond what should be there. So one thing, too, I did want to clarify with the Urban Evolutions, in case anybody was looking up, there is some confusion as to how the demolition or deconstruction works. So Urban Evolutions, like a lot of contractors, works with demolition subcontractors. So if you were looking up, as I know somebody here was, looking up Urban Evolutions, they kind of hit a brick wall when it said, "Well, it doesn't show any pictures. It doesn't say that that's what they do. They work with subcontractors." That's what, say, Bolt, or Bozen, Ellis, Myron, any one of these major contractors, they work with specialized demolition subcontractors. And this is no different than anybody else. So in case there was any questions there, just...
So one of the cool things, I think, I mean, obviously, we tried to save the front. We didn't get that agreement dissolved, so at this point, we have to move forward with it because the owners said they can't. They're not going to do anything. With Urban Evolutions, they work with a company called, I'm going to get it wrong...
Recyclene.
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 And it's unique because what they do is they actually take the materials and repurpose them. So in effect, the Fox will still live on in other buildings.
Yeah, so to compare the two companies that did give us proposals, like you said, Recyclene does repurpose as much as possible. So instead of all the brick and concrete and steel going directly to a landfill potentially, they try to reuse as much as they can elsewhere. CND Excavating, they do, they've had nothing but great references when I was calling around, but it goes to the landfill, anything that can go there, other than maybe clean concrete. So, and that would actually, they would prefer to give to the city, which we'd have to work with within the city to see if we even have the capabilities of it. So from that perspective, you know, to me, looking from the outside in, that's another plus to the Urban Evolutions proposal is, you know, like Mayor said, a pretty good chance that that building is going to become something else.
Thank you very much. We'll reserve the right to have you come back and answer questions if need be. Director Knowski?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Just wanted to reiterate, you know, originally, we had been provided proposals from the two companies. We did give them a Friday deadline at noon. And so, you know, honestly, at this point, I'm comfortable with either proposal. When I put out my recommendation, it was based on the understanding and some conversations I had with CND that they would be mid to late December. However, the information provided to me today stating that they would not be able to get there until after Christmas definitely gave me some pause and reviewed the other proposals. And so, in conversation with Inspection Superintendent Schneider and the mayor, I'm very comfortable going with Urban Evolutions if that's the desire of the city council.
Thank you very much, and we'll reserve the right to have you come back as well. Alder Dalton?
I would like to recuse myself from this discussion.
Thank you. And we will have that recusal noted in the minutes. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Alder Jennings?
I have some comments.
Me, too.
The Sanders family, Ada Sanders, is a constituent in my district. Fox Theater is in District 1. I am extremely frustrated at the way in which this entire process has unfolded. I also sit on the Historic Preservation Board. To date, we have not had the city provide council with adequate information about the engineering information about this building, and council was not privy to a walkthrough. When I look back at my own mistakes in terms of asking harder questions than I have and demanding more than I have, I'm disappointed in myself as well. The first question I have is, why has council not been provided with an engineering report from a structural engineer to date? We're working off of one from five to six years ago by MBJ, and we have yet to see a structural engineering report on the Fox. And in defense of the Sanders family, they have been asking, and asking, and begging to get into the building, to have people review the building, and they have been denied in every way. And I also want to express my consternation at Mayor Wiesa and for blaming the Sanders for what has transpired. That is inappropriate. It's unfair, and should never have happened. So the first question is, why have we not been provided a structural engineering report by a structural engineer?
Let's have your other questions, Alder Jennings, just in case there are...
That's the question I have right now.
Only question?
I'm not going to say that's my only question.
You have more questions, Alder Person.
That's not my only question.
Okay. We'll reserve that, then. Anyone else have questions? Yes, Alder Dugan?
Yes, I just wanted to go back to the two companies that...
Making notes, right?
That did the demolition. I wonder if there's a difference in their history? How much time has each company actually spent doing this sort of work? And I know that Director Schneider said that he had wonderful references for one of them. What about for the other one? I wonder if you could answer those two questions.
Okay, and we'll get to those. Anyone else have questions? President Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everybody here. Mine is a comment, and I had spoken with Director Knowski earlier today, that when I looked at the proposals, as a solid waste professional, I have been a long proponent of deconstruction as a method of managing particularly historic buildings. And so I am pleased to hear the reconsideration of someone who might be able to salvage and utilize materials versus, you know, I've got a landfill. I can put stuff in a landfill, but what we really need to be looking at is deconstruction, and we should be looking at that on a much broader basis through ordinance. So that's my only comment.
Okay. Alder Morrow?
The one comment I would like to make is, we shouldn't have even have had to be here because Create Portage County was going to be the one that was going to help deal with this. And then when that ended up falling through, we're like the matter of last resort. So, I mean, we just got snow. It's been, I mean, with the engineering report that we had, they've had five winters of snows, rains, and everything else. So I understand how that is probably not an accurate representation of what's going on inside there now. I know from the pictures that we had, the inside of the Fox, even Create wasn't going to save the last part of it. They were just going to do the, they were just going to do the front. And so they even thought that the back end was not going to even be saved when they even had it. And it was my, our understanding that the Sanders family was fine with that. And now, at the last minute, we're here, and the only option that I think that we're going to have from the information that we've seen is that the worst-case scenario is going to end up occurring to this place. And it's sad. I mean, they've had Fox on Main for years. There have been several committees to try to save it, and we're at where we're at now. I mean, we are, I mean, the city was not even going to be doing this. It was going to be others. And we're the last ones that are trying to do anything. And now, with the position that we're in, there really isn't any other options left that I've seen. I mean, I've heard Alder, I mean, I've heard Alder Jennings, what she has said. I remember from the last meeting we had from the engineering study and the material we got last night as well. I mean, with the snows that we've already had, I mean, from what the council's been told, those trusses may not be holding too much longer, and the roof has been open. I mean, we have not had, we have not had a walkthrough, but I know from the photos that we've seen, it did not look very good at all. And again, I just want to stress, it's sad that we're at this place where we're at, where we're at, we're the last resort after Fox on Main, Create, Portage County. And I still haven't heard exactly what happened with them to have this all fall through, but I don't want anything to happen to the businesses that are on the other side and damage more of the surrounding area.
Well, and I'll just make a comment before we go to the questions. When it comes to blame, there's plenty to go around, going back to the early 80s and the city administration there, and the things that hadn't been done. People have tried, like you said, over the years, to do something with that. Our last hope was kind of that Fox on Main and Create, Portage County, they're not able to do anything. So we got everybody in the same room, Fox on Main, Create, the Sanders family, city staff, and tried to figure out a way to at least save some of that building. And we reached an agreement. And that agreement was that the RA would take possession of it for a dollar from Fox on Main, under the conditions, as the council voted on, to not have any responsibility financially, and that the donation agreement would be dissolved, which restricts the uses. All of the approvals have taken place already, and to date, we do not have the dissolution of that agreement. That's the only thing that's holding that up, but we have to move forward in the interest of safety. The reason we haven't had a walkthrough with council is twofold. One, none of us are engineers. And two, it has been deemed unfit for human occupancy. It's dangerous. We had a engineer that was with Director Knowski, said he didn't even want to be in the building because of the condition it was in. So there's plenty of blame to go around, and it's unfortunate that it had come to this. I was really hoping that we would be able to save some of this, but unfortunately, it doesn't look like that's going to be happening. Director and superintendent, whoever wants to go on either of those two questions, one, why was there no engineering report, current engineering report provided to council? And two, the differences between the two companies and the proposals, please.
Just, I have one more question.
Oh, sorry. One more question, then.
You know, semantics are really important in how we use words, and you've said something that I'm not sure we're all in agreement on, and that's saving the Fox.
You're right. We are not all in agreement.
And I think that is the issue. And when we listen to respond instead of to understand, and I'm guilty of that, we miss the nuances in what the words mean. And I've come to understand that the Sanders family believes saving the Fox means saving the auditorium. And then for others, saving the Fox means, of course, the facade. So how, it's very hard to have a conversation unless we have a common language, and we're missing that right now.
Sure.
I have another follow-up question.
Okay. Hang on. We'll get to the other questions in a bit, then.
Multiple times, safety has been mentioned, and apparently, we cannot go into the building because it's so unsafe. We've had crews in there for weeks doing work. So that's a contradiction.
Trained professionals.
I'm sure the trusses know that, so, okay.
Okay. Alder Person Niebone?
Picking up on something President Johnson just said, when this first came to us, I got a lot of emails from constituents who didn't want to spend any money at all. At that point, it was a proposal from Create, Portage County. But at the very last minute, it seemed to me, for the sake of our downtown, it was important to try to save the facade. And in my mind, that's what save the Fox means, is to save, preserve that facade on our downtown street to preserve the historical integrity of the downtown. I would hate to see a gaping space there. Something will come in, no doubt, but it might not look as nice. And it's very sad to be at the point where, if we don't make it a theater again, we can't save the facade to preserve the integrity of the downtown. So...
Thank you. I'll have you two gentlemen respond to those questions. Why has there not been an updated engineering report sent to the Alders? And the differences between the two companies?
So from the report side of things, there is a 2013 through 2018 update. The update was very brief, basically reiterating the fact that nothing had been done with any of the recommendations from the older, the older report. At that point, I don't know what the responsibility of this department is to email every report that comes to the council, quite frankly, and your emails will be bombarded on a daily basis. It is an open record.
Were you asked from anybody for that report?
No, and it's an open record. It's in the file, so anybody at any point, you know, council, anybody at any point can ask for that, and we give it to them. There were some people that have asked over the last months that wanted a copy, and we'll happily email that over to anybody that requested. As far as the references go, the reason I had to call more so on the CND is because they didn't have a track record that I could kind of follow through, whether it be online or anything like that. CND is a small company up north that, you know, they didn't have any photos of jobs, anything like that for me to follow. So that's why I went more in-depth with them than with a company that is working through an engineering firm.
Did Urban Evolution...
Alder Dugan, go ahead.
Thank you. Did Urban Evolution have more of a track record that you could follow?
Yes.
And can you tell us about that?
Just following testimonials and everything online.
Okay.
Okay.
And they've been in the business quite a while?
Correct.
Okay.
And so has CND after talking, sorry, so just...
That's okay.
So has CND after talking to them, finding out their history.
Okay.
They've been around a long time also, so...
Alder Jennings?
So I have seen the 2018 report, and I think you said that it reiterates what the earlier report by MBJ says.
Correct.
And I don't read anything in here that says tear the building down. Am I mistaken?
No, you're not mistaken.
So we're basing our decision on the 2018 report that was a reiteration of the MBJ report that in no way says tear the building down. In fact, it says support the structure.
But we're not basing the decision on that. The decision is based on observations from multiple engineers.
Not only that, but the statute itself has nothing to do with that report. Statutes, based on, there's two ways to look at it, depending on whether it's a historic building or not. If the repairs would exceed 50% in a nonhistoric building, or 80, 80 or 85% in a historic building, that's what triggers a raise order, not a report of any sort. So, I mean, we're talking $20,000 worth of repairs would trigger a raise order in this case.
Okay. Director Knowski, anything to add?
Yeah, I guess first off, to address a comment made by Alder Jennings earlier, I had said some things that were printed in a local paper that I regret, and I apologize to the Sanders family. There were some of the language that I used was inappropriate for a person in my position, so I do apologize. But getting back to the structural report, if my department had to do a structural study on every building that we'd ever raise, issue raise orders on, we, it would just be astronomical at some point. It was the, when the raise order was issued, the Fox on Main LLC, which is the owner of the company, could have hired an engineer to do an updated full structural engineering report on the building to address the concerns that Mr. Schneider had raised. And so, again, I don't necessarily believe that it's the city's responsibility to be putting those reports together in order to determine whether or not a building should be raised. As previously indicated, there is some leeway within the raising statutes, and Mr. Schneider followed the statutes through, and he still believes, and I agree with him, that the building is a threat to public safety and to the property around it, and that's how we've gotten here. As indicated a number of times, there, I think, were 12 items that had to be addressed to relieve the raise order, or stay the raise order, I suppose. And to this point, none of those 12 items have been addressed. And we are beyond the October 18th, 2019 deadline to raise the building or correct the violations, so...
Thank you, sir. All right, Alder Persons, you have a recommendation from staff to go with UEI. I would ask that you allow staff the flexibility. There's two bids, one for the partial demo and one for the full demo, because we do still have a couple of days before Friday where we might get that dissolved agreement squared away. So I would ask for flexibility on choosing either bid from the same company. President Johnson?
Yeah, my motion is pretty much that, to go with Urban, what are they? I'm sorry.
UEI.
UEI.
Yeah.
Sorry, acronym.
Urban Evolution Incorporated.
I prefer, yeah, Urban Evolution Incorporated, with an emphasis on deconstruction. I appreciate that. But I also would like to ask staff to continue to work to save as much of the building as possible, and by save, I mean the front third, which we have been talking about for the better part of two months. I would love to see the entire structure. If I win the lottery, I'll go buy a ticket tonight.
I bet.
I certainly would do that, so that's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Alder Person Morrow. Okay, we had District Attorney Milewski in the back. You want to speak? I need you to come up to the lectern, though. You can bring him up if you want. It wouldn't be the first time. Get him started early.
You might have something to add.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if there was a comment, period. My name is Louis Milewski, 1101 Ridge Road, Stevens Point. I brought my son because that's how to pick him up, but also because he's the next generation. So I agree with Alder Person Johnson that the building should be, frankly, saved as much as possible, and I would disagree with some comments that it's not the city's obligation. It absolutely is your obligation. And the reason it is your obligation is because you have a historical committee. You voted unanimously to save the building. You have an order, you have a policy and procedure that says you shall support these structures. This is a historical structure and a state structure. And what you should, what just my, ultimately, my respect is that permits are, excuse me, orders should have been issued years ago. I understand, Mr. Mayor, you can't undo the past. We're not here about the past, but that's one...
Off again.
Shh, just a second. That's one way to save historic buildings, which is to order the landowner to fix them before they get so dilapidated, right? And clearly, last thing I just want to say is that, you know, the December 15th deadline, in some respects, was arbitrary because, obviously, we have to extend it because of the contractor's time. And because of that, my understanding is, Create walked away because they couldn't afford to step in right away to get it done by that date. And because of that, they were really the only game in town to save it. And so I hope, you know, you can do what you can. I understand budgets are tight, but it's the most historical building downtown besides graffiti's, and you can't have a gaping hole. As I said at the last common council, I appreciate the common council's vote to help assist with the demo, but really, at the end of the day, you know, having an aggressive inspection department is proper, and the saving historical buildings is absolutely proper. Plover would die to have some of the buildings that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more. I personally will do everything we can to save as much of the building as possible, but we can't do it alone. Just a bit of a housekeeping thing here, we do have some... Just a bit of a housekeeping thing here, we do have some public hearings scheduled for the 6 o'clock Plan Commission meeting order, uh, meeting, Plan Commission meeting. So, at 6 o'clock, I am going to recess the common council, call the Plan Commission to order, and then we're going to recess the Plan Commission to finish this, because we've got a motion on the floor. Okay, so I don't know how long it's going to take, but I would ask the commissioners to be patient. We just have, because we have public hearings, we need to start at the specific time, just like we do with council, and to stay in line with the law, we're going to have to do the little shuffling here. So, at this point, I am going to recess the common council until, after we call the Plan Commission to order. I will now reconvene the common council at 6:01 to finish our action. Lots of hammering. Okay, discussion on the motion at hand. Alder Dugan and then Alder Jennings.
Yeah, like several who have already spoken, I just want to say that the, I hope that we can also still save some of it, the front part of it in particular. It's a historic district. This building and the district are on the national register, state register. It's extremely important to maintain the facade throughout Main, Main Street. It also is of cultural importance and public importance. I have had, unlike Alder Nibon, I have had people talk to me about how much it meant to them. I had three today when they found out that we were going to have this tonight, how much that building meant to them for the time they spent there, for the ambience, for the time that they were able to see foreign films, art films, independent films. It's the only place in town you could do that. So, it was that, it's cultural, it's historical. Then finally, we've spoken about this already, it's a damned shame that several entities, including city government, have neglected and abused the building.
Thank you. Alder Jennings?
I'm concerned about the motion, which is vague, because the bids are specific about either tearing down the north portion or tearing down the entire building. I'm not comfortable voting on a motion that is, well, try to save what you can. So, the motion should be in line with what the bids actually state.
I agree.
And I think that's reasonable, if we wanted to amend the motion to, to state those two bids. And then, again, I'd still ask for staff flexibility, because we have some time before Friday to make this happen.
And again, I thank you, Alder Jennings, for my lack of clarity, reminding me of my lack of clarity. It's been, as Clerk said, it's been a long week already, and it's only Monday. My motion really pertains to the north two-thirds in, as it was presented in the bids, so.
Okay, so, that doesn't allow staff flexibility. We don't own it.
Sure.
We won't own it unless that agreement gets dissolved. That was the motion of the RA.
Well, we'd want staff to try and work towards...
And, and we have been.
Resolution.
And we're still looking at that, but they will start on Friday. So, at that point, I mean, we should know which one we're going with. So, I would ask that, again, if you're sure that's what you want to do, I would advise that, but if that's what you want to do, we need the ability, because otherwise, we're going to have to have another meeting on Friday to get the whole thing down.
I think we want to do this right, and not, I mean, I know this has been a long, drawn-out process, and everybody's frustrated, but our entire discussion, council anyway, has been about the north two-thirds with saving the front third, if at all possible.
Right.
This was the direction we were headed. This is the direction I supported, and I'm reluctant to say raise the entire structure without a lot of due diligence on the, it may be inconvenient for this council to meet again, but I think it may be necessary.
Well, and let's, let's ask the director, can you tell us right off the bat, actually, I thought Orrin was here, maybe he could speak for that.
Yes.
There you are, sorry. What, if any inconvenience this might cause, or problems this might cause with the UEI if this one is chosen, starting Friday and not knowing how far it goes? I imagine there's a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would defer to the applicant to answer that question. I mean, I could make something up, I don't think you guys want.
No, we don't want that.
Hello, Orrin Jacobson, 1579 Church Street. In my discussion with, with Mr. Schneider today, we had said, even if we were awarded the contract for the entire building, we would intend to begin with deconstruction of the northern two-thirds of the building to give an opportunity for renegotiation, as we're also of the mind that if the front third of the building can be saved, that, that would be our interest. Alternatively, if we were only awarded a contract for the two-thirds, I think the only ramification of that is that our start point of saying we can start this Friday, if we know by tomorrow that there may be a gap. So, let's say we sign a contract for the back two-thirds, we can start on the deadline that we've said, but if there was a delay and we were looking at a contract for the other part of the building later, we may not be able to commit to that being a continuous process. There may be a gap between deconstructing the theater portion and deconstructing the, the front portion of the building. Not just at this point in time, you know, there may be no gap at all, but I'd say that that would be the, essentially, the one ramification of, of having two contracts that were delayed in time.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Johnson, you want to restate your motion?
Why don't I just withdraw my motion and start over?
Technically, we can, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, I, I, my intent, let's start with my intent, was to emphasize what this council has reiterated in numerous discussions, whether it was planning for Crete Portage County to do their work, or whatever has transpired in the last little bit, was to save the front third, if at all possible. That is my intent. I want that reflected in my motion, because I'm hoping we can go in that direction, and I appreciate Orrin being with that emphasis, I think that's an important emphasis. So, if that can be done in the contract, then I would make a motion to award to UEI, I can never remember, sorry.
Urban Evolution.
Again, with an emphasis, I'm still stating, with an emphasis on the north two-thirds.
And I agree with you 100%. You can talk to staff. Our intention has been, all along, to save that front third if we can.
And then also...
We don't know that that's possible, though.
Yes, and then gives, you know, ask staff to continue to work with all due diligence to save what they can.
Yeah. Mayor, if I might, real quick.
Absolutely.
Just clarifying, too, that that would include the additional monies for replacing the roof on the southern third and the...
Yes.
Shoring up of the southern third as well? Okay.
Don't want to leave it naked.
The 197...
Alder Morrow is the second.
Alder Shore, go first.
Okay, but we need a second on the motion. I just want to make sure that the restatement of the motion is what you had in mind for the second.
Are you comfortable with the rest?
Sure.
Okay. Alder Shore.
Thank you. A couple of things come to mind. If I understand what President Johnson is saying, the idea is for this body to, in a way, keep ourselves on the hook for the ultimate decision all the way up until we reach the break, thus necessitating a second meeting. The one thing that I guess, and, and the intention with regard to saving the front third seems clear, and just from reading the discussions that we've been having, that's where, you know, the consensus lies. But I think the other piece is that, is being uncomfortable preserving the front third unless there's that full ownership without the conditions, right? It's a long way of asking.
But that's not what's going to happen, based on this motion.
How this resolution relates...
Right.
To that issue.
Right. So, based on the motion, and City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, based on the motion, UEI would begin demolition on Friday. They would tear down up to the first two-thirds or so of the back of the building. If we can save the front third, if it's, it's found that there's nothing hiding behind the walls, that front third gets saved, we still don't own it, Fox on Main retains ownership, and the restrictive donation agreement is still in place. So, all of those restrictions are still there. The city doesn't own it, and therefore, we'll, we'll still work with whoever we can to get this redeveloped, but the Fox on Main still owns it. And then, we would bill the demolition costs to Fox on Main, which would appear on their taxes, it'd be a special assessment for whatever that dollar amount is, 168,000 or whatever it is, which would go on their taxes. After three years of non-payment of taxes, then the county would take it through, or could take it through tax forfeiture, at which time, the city would then possibly be able to acquire the property. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Which means that while from a preservation standpoint, this works, from a redevelopment standpoint, not so much.
No, our, our hands would be tied effectively for very likely three years. But we certainly could work with anybody who came along, and we would, because our goal would be to redevelop that property. I believe Fox on Main would do that as well. Okay?
Jennings?
Alder Jennings?
I'll need help from our City Attorney, but I think, I would like to refer this to another date, and I think, where's our attorney?
He's in the back.
I think refer can come after the motion.
I think rather than talking about parliamentary actions, why don't you just explain what it is you'd like to achieve, and maybe we can come up with a way to put that to a decision here.
I think council is uncertain about this decision.
So, basically, you're just saying a motion, an action to adjourn or postpone?
Well, there is a procedure called refer, and a specific date is applied to that, as I understand it.
Okay. Off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with exactly what the details of that would be. I could certainly look into it while we're sitting here. Is there a particular date you have in mind, or a particular additional amount of information that you would be looking to get in the meantime?
November 18th, prior to common council.
December.
November.
December 16th?
Sorry. December 16th.
We have DJ shaking his head, because I know why he's shaking his head. We need to get this taken care of before we get too heavy a snow. And I'll let DJ speak to that, as to why delaying this any further is going to be a bad idea.
So, I've reiterated over and over the condition of the building, and I actually lost sleep over this weekend, knowing how much snow we've gotten. So, to delay anything any further doesn't make much sense to me at this point. To put this bluntly, because I think we're at that point, if, if the city does not acquire this, the whole building comes down. It's just that way. The raise order is for the whole building, it's not for the back two-thirds. That was a scenario that was playing out, that you, as the council, would have to make. If you could have came up with a deal, I would have allowed that to happen, because the city was basically going to fork out the money for the maintenance and construction of that front third. To do anything other than that, the Fox on Main has no money to maintain even that front third. So, at that point, the whole building comes down, based on the raise order as how it is written. So, you basically, in my opinion, right now, have, and I understand where you're going, and based on Mr. Jacobson's explanation of how they're going to go about the deconstruction, I think what the mayor wants is the flexibility for me to say, if they get halfway done and, and the Sanders or the, and the city come to an agreement, I can stop the full raise order, and now we pursue the keeping that southern third and, and going from that road. I think that's the mayor's intention and how he's trying to get that wording, but we have to look at how we are right now making this call, and there's a full raise order on the building. And that's not going away with the Fox on Main owning the building.
I have a question for the attorney.
Sure. City Attorney? Nope, there he is.
Attorney Beveridge, since I spent part of my day dealing with liability issues, now that council is being told of possible imminent harm, and if, what are our liabilities here as the city? I mean, we don't own the building, we're just implementing a raise order on the advice of our inspection engineer, and if we don't take action, is there something that could fall back on the city?
I think in this circumstance, it's overwhelmingly likely the city would be immune, because you're making legislative decisions...
Sure.
...to either take or not take an action here, when, which essentially have absolute line, immunity under the law.
Sure. That doesn't change moral liability.
No, it certainly doesn't.
No.
So, I'm going to just remind everyone that we have been talking about this for this particular issue for months, arguably years in some cases. It has come to a point where something needs to be done. We've been told that repeatedly by the staff, who are the experts that we hire for their opinions. They are the professionals. I am not an engineer, I am not a planner, none of us have the, the experience that our staff has. Our staff is making a recommendation that there is imminent risk of failure. We even had one of the bidders come in who wanted to get out of the building, because he didn't feel safe sitting in the building. Director Karnowski told me that he sat with his phone by his bed all weekend, because he was expecting a call with the weight of the snow. If that roof collapses, we may not be financially responsible, but if we delay this, we certainly have some moral issues, as President Johnson alluded to. Staff recommendation is to award the contract to UEI and allow for the flexibility to choose whether the whole building has to come down, or part of the building has to come down, as we know more. We won't know about that front third of the building until we can see more of it. Right now, you're getting very small pieces of it, and we believe that it's sound, with the exception of the leaky roof and things like that that need to be fixed immediately. But if we don't do something, we run the risk of failure, collapse. The, the neighbor to the, I guess that would be the west side, has been repeatedly complaining about things falling off the roof onto their property, they're worried about the, the walls collapsing and how that will affect their business, because they're remodeling that building. I'm sorry, it was the other way around. The east side, yes, the east side. The west side of the building was concerned, too, that's where the Q Gallery is.
Right.
Because they have stuff on the walls, and what happens? So, I would strongly urge you to, to make that decision tonight, and allow the staff, the flexibility, the experts, the flexibility to try and save that, because we all know that's our goal, is to try and save that front third of the facade, that historic-looking piece that we were talking about.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we still have an unanswered question or procedure here from Alder Person Jennings.
Gotcha.
So, it, it looks like you may have been asking about a motion to refer to committee. Is that what you had in mind? Because that's what I was able to find very quickly. Which would be a motion...
I did read that it is to committee, but that wouldn't be the case here.
Okay.
Because we have a full council, and it would go to full council. Sounds like that's not going to happen, so. Sounds like that's not gonna happen, so...
Okay.
Opinion?
If there's any other comments from other people.
So, did that answer your question enough? Okay, good. I was confused. Alder Shore, and then Alder Morrow.
Thanks. Going back to our exchange a little bit earlier, an important distinction has kind of come clear to me in the meantime, right? So I started by saying that it seemed like the intention was to keep us on the hook for the decision, but if we break the connection between the demolition and removing the existing agreement, as you and I just discussed, the motion basically says, go ahead with the preservation, go ahead and implement the raise order in that way, and then what happens is what you described in terms of who's responsible for, you know, for the cost, and how much time is allowed to pass. Because the whole thing about tonight versus Friday, with the way I understand the motion on the floor, doesn't matter, because if we approve something that says, go ahead and raise and preserve, my expectation is that, you know, why remove the existing agreement? Right? It's likely to stay in force, you know, that, in other words, it's not gonna come back to us at the end of the week, based on continuing negotiations. I would expect that such a decision would affect the negotiations and would, you know, they'd kind of break down. That'd be my expectation.
Well, Alder, I think there's some confusion in regards to this body's ability to change a raise order. And I'm gonna ask the inspection superintendent
Okay.
To talk about those statutory authorities.
Yes, at this point, especially at this point, the only person that can suspend or remove a raise order is me. There is a 30-day window at the date of the raise order when it's issued, that the property owner can petition the courts. In fact, this one was extended to at least 30 days, if not 60. So they had 90 days at some point, I believe, 60 for sure, maybe 90 days to file that, and they never did. So there, again, we're back to this, we're back to the bottom line, is you guys can't stop the raise order, you're determining your options once they start the raise order. So it's, give them the flexibility, or you guys the flexibility. I see it this way, the raise order, the total demolition of this building falls on my shoulders. If you want to save any of it, you guys have to shoulder that cost and burden from that point where you come to the agreement thereon out. So the cost upfront really doesn't matter, because you have no choice, it's how you want to proceed, assuming the city can come up with that.
So is it an engineering issue, or is it an ownership and redevelopment issue?
There's two phases to this, two pieces. The engineering issue is this, something has to be done. The ownership and redevelopment issue is more political. You have the ability to give money to a private entity to fix up their building if you want to do that. But you won't own it.
Why wouldn't preservation of the front third be congruent with the raise order? It would, right? Because you'd be...
I don't, the city doesn't own the building, so I...
And I think DJ explained this earlier, is that, so you demolition the front two-thirds of the building, save the front third.
Yeah.
Okay? The Fox on Main group that owns it has no ability to even fix the leaky roof. They wipe their hands of it. They don't have the resources to do anything.
So it continues to deteriorate.
So now what do you do?
Correct.
The front third, then, continues to deteriorate, and now eventually, that fails, and we have to tear that down to, again, at taxpayers' expense. What we'd like to do is take ownership of that, so we then have the ability to go in and fix that roof, and start with redevelopment
On the market.
You know, talking with people who might be able to use that space. But without that dissolution of the donation agreement that the Sanders family has, that won't happen.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alder Morrow, I'm sorry, I forgot.
I know this is a very emotional issue, and I've been guilty of this on some other issues as well. It seems like it's gonna be like what we talked about with Edgewater, if we were gonna start to do that facade, what's gonna be beneath that? So we don't really know if parts of it can be saved, and how much that's really going to also cost. I think that's a great, I mean, that's a great example, because we don't know. And, I mean, I would be in favor of the UEI, because we're at this point now, because negotiations have us stalled, and this could have been resolved earlier. And I understand that there's a legacy involved, and that's a very emotional issue, and that's hard. But if that falls down with the snows that we have, and those other businesses are, I mean, there's, and those other businesses are affected by that, I mean, that's gonna be on us. And unlike so many issues, we can't kick this can down the road any longer. So, I mean, I would be in support of the UEI, so that we could do that, so we could try to save what we can, if we, if we, like, even can. But we are being put, we are being put in this position, and this is the decision, I think, that we need, that we need to also make. We can't really kick this can down, or we're gonna hear in the news if something happened, and then it's gonna be, well, why didn't we do anything when we had the chance?
Correct.
But the motion on the floor does not have the flexibility, the motion on the floor...
Correct. The motion on the floor does not have that flexibility. Well, let's do this, because we have both Ada Sanders and Don Sanders sitting in the audience, you're under no obligation to answer this, but a simple, very forward question, is it the intention of the Sanders family to dissolve the restrictive agreement, or not? And if you don't want to answer, that's completely okay, you're under no obligation.
I think it's a little unfair to ask them, and...
But we've been talking about it for a couple of weeks.
I know, this isn't necessarily the form for that. They weren't prepared, probably, to respond like that. I think it's better
It's up to you.
Better for a pro.
Okay. They are gonna keep the donation agreement.
Which means that the covenants are still gonna be in place?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess, just to...
And that will follow, that will follow, it will follow the space.
Correct. The donation agreement was a 20-year agreement, I believe we were five years into the 20-year agreement. The redevelopment authority accepted the property for a dollar, with two additional conditions, the dissolution of the donation agreement was signed by the Sanders family, and that the redevelopment authority was not financially responsible for raising of the property. If the intention of the Sanders family is to retain that donation agreement, there could be discussion with the RDA that they would release that purchase agreement, and that the city council could choose to purchase the property and not include the dissolution of the donation agreement as part of that purchase. Remember that you are now bound by that, and the uses, permitted and prohibited uses within that donation agreement for at least the next 15 years. However, that would give the city ultimate ownership of the property. I have discussed this a little bit with the Fox on Main Executive Committee, and they are very open to that concept. Their idea right now is to save the facade and the front third as much as possible, and if this is the way that they can do that, they have expressed their interest in voting to sell it to the city, not to the redevelopment authority.
And we're not gonna be able to talk about that tonight, because that's not the agenda.
Correct.
But we certainly could have another meeting to discuss that alternative. All right, so we have a motion, and I'm going to restate it the way I believe you intended. If that's not the case, correct me.
Okay.
The motion is to award the bid to UEI for the demolition of the front two-thirds of the building.
Back.
Oh, that's right.
Back.
Back two-thirds of the building-ish, and where, when we say thirds, that's not an exact measurement.
I did think...
But there's a brick wall that is roughly at the one-third line.
That is correct.
That's what we're looking at, preserving. And then also authorizing the additional expenditure from the city to, we'll call it mothball, the front third, which includes spending the money to fix the roof, and any other necessary repairs to make that building safe. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's basically their item one and two, UEI's proposal, item one and two.
All right. If you are in favor of the motion, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow?
No.
Yes.
Niebone?
Yes.
Slawinski's excuse. Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Yes.
Nabel?
Yes.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
No.
Six to two.
Six to two. That motion is adopted. Item number three is consideration of authorizing the staff to apply for a Wisconsin DOT multimodal local supplement, or MLS grant, for a rail spur development within East Park Commerce Center. Director Kornowski, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, so this is a multi-department grant application for this coming, well, the application is due this coming Friday. However, staff has identified, including rail spurs, as an important economic development piece in the East Park Commerce Center. So we are working on submitting that as our bid to the multimodal local supplement grant process. This was a one-time dollar amount that was included in the 19 to 21 byneal budget by the governor, and so this is kind of our one shot to get 90% of that cost covered. The other 10% of that cost would come out of the Tiff District within East Park Commerce Center. Again, pretty substantial amount, I mean, we, you can request up to $3 million. We're trying to get as much of that as possible. And so with that, I would answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions from council?
No.
What are your wishes? Alder Jennings?
Move to approve.
Thank you. We'll give the second tomorrow. Discussion, hearing done, roll call, please.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Nine, zero.
Nine, zero. That is adopted, and the common council is adjourned at 6:33.[1771.33]